Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, May 15th, for our Selectman meeting at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the flag of allegiance.
The Legion's to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda, announcements, Memorial Day parade. That's going to occur on May 29th, is it? Monday. Participating members will meet, perform at the Congress Central and Providence Streets. And the parade will start off, step off at 11:00 PM.
AM.
AM, I'm sorry. Be good.
You'll be the only one there. You're not going to see it.
Even Roland's horses won't be there.
So we look forward to that and hopefully it's a nice day. And tonight, we have minutes from April 4th and April 18th. I would hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th.
I have one question. On page three, paragraph six, the last sentence, it says fifteen months. I just think that was rather odd to have the...
Which set?
Page three, paragraph six, the last sentence.
The first seven minutes?
The ten minutes.
Fifteen months.
Fifteen months. I was thinking that's kind of an odd...
I don't know. I was not, I did not listen to the tape, so I don't know. It relates to the thing that I think you attended, Mr. Chairman, related to the, it may be that long.
Yeah, the fifteen months for...
Yeah, it's a long time period because it's a federal...
Fifteen months.
Fifteen months, yeah.
Fifteen months.
Four years.
So it's kind of an odd time.
Yep, so that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you. So it's correct. All right. But thank you for asking.
I make a motion to accept the meetings of April 4th, 2017, and April 18th, 2017.
Second. Roll.
I can't vote on the April 4th.
Yeah, it's split, so...
The 18th. I can vote on the 18th.
Do you want two motions?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to amend my motion, Roland, just for the April 4th meeting.
All right, yeah, because I was out on the 18th.
Okay. So we're doing the 4th.
So vote for the 4th.
Aye.
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 I make a motion to accept April 18th as written.
Second. There's a few things. It states in the first, on the first page, the last paragraph and then fifth sentence, carriage estates two, carriage estates two was not up for acceptance. It was a carriage estates. So that's a sizable error.
Can you go back and, if you can say it again? I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
On the first page, last paragraph, fifth sentence, it says carriage estates two, and carriage estates two was not up for road acceptance. It was carriage estates. Also, on the fourth and fifth pages, it says for the, for those articles when we voted on it, it says the votes, but it doesn't say why I voted nay. And I said that at the meeting, and I think that should be written down, so it explains why.
I think when we have done minutes in the past, I would be more than happy to express to her that you wanted to put down why you said nay. Do you want to repeat why you said nay now?
Because I thought it was the job of the planning board to remove their own article or to leave it on, and not the Selectman's.
For future reference, if you want something actually added into the minutes, then state, because not everything, not every piece of discussion is put in. So typically, you would say, please note for the record that I...
Rather than...
And then say your reason. That way, the person taking the notes will make sure they add it in.
Sure.
And so with those two amendments, the carriage estate on page one, and Mr. Alwood's reason to amend those minutes. That would be my amended motion.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Next, we have an appointment on the agenda. That's with the Conservation Commission. And we have a candidate interested in the Conservation Commission, and that's Pamela Maloney. She indicated her interest to the town in the serving. And it appears in your packet, you have a description of, or indication of her interest to serve on the Conservation Commission. We have basically two unexpired terms. And if we vote tonight, it would be to fill, make it effective, until June 30th of 17. And then it'd be a reappointment at that time.
I make a motion for Pamela Maloney to fill the open position for Conservation until its expiration.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I just also say that Ms. Maloney has a very great advocacy background with regards to the environment? She was part of the Earth Day event here, which was very successful. I know we got kind of overshadowed by our entire town meeting, but there was a very great attendance, both she and her husband, who also works for the Blackstone Heritage Corridor, have been very active in that. So I look forward to her participation, and I know she has come with some strong advocacy, also coming from other members of the Commission, so...
Thank you. Public forum. Evening, Natalia.
Hi, will you? I know there's a couple little errors and omissions on the annual report, but what I'm concerned with is page 18. It lists the Assistant Assessor as appointed. The position is hired, not appointed. Due to other issues that have come recently, I'd want to make sure that I clarify that, so there's no future problems with that. I was hired originally as an Assistant Clerk, which was upgraded to Assistant Assessor. I was hired at the end of 2010, and the start date was January 4th, 2011. So I just wanted to make sure that, because it's in this big fancy document, that there's no problems in the future, because it's not appointed, it is hired. The board members are appointed, but not the position, the office position.
And I wish you would have said something earlier, because I know that that information strictly had come from both our treasure collector and also I had it reviewed by our town clerk when we were looking at that. So if that were the case, what's that?
Master employee list.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is that they did it. So it wasn't intentional?
No, but I just want to make sure, because these things happen. We've had that, you know, other thing that I tried to clarify since January, and three times, it's still not correct. So I just didn't want my, the assessors to be in the same position that the planning board member is in.
I'm sorry, I didn't call you on that last one, but I appreciate that.
Well, the planning board position, I, in fact, in January, February, when the nomination papers came out, we went over that and clarified that, basically, two positions open. One, because Michelle Demond was, her term was expiring, she had taken over from Brian Carroll. And then Steve Erno's position came up last year, and he was appointed for one year. So then, when the ballots went out, I again, the first initial printing, I said, there's two positions. So she reprinted it, and there was, that was why the two positions were down.
I think we could put this on, we need to actually put this on as an agenda, as opposed to a public forum.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that the assessors wasn't going to come up with that.
This was just an error from maybe two departments. I apologize on their behalf. I'll make that correct.
It's, I just want to make sure that it's perfectly...
Yes. I think we all know that you are the Assistant Assessor. I don't think that goes without saying. I know that.
But the annual report doesn't say so, so I just wanted to make sure.
The policy manual would indicate that.
Hopefully, yes.
Knowing that we were coming from a very difficult circumstance to try to make a commemorative document, I think the rest of it, you know, and understanding how difficult that is to put together while we're, you know...
Well, yeah, there's some election work that's missing and stuff like that, but that wasn't my concern. My concern was that one, because I didn't want this to come up later on, and there'd be confusion over it. So it's just up front.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Natalia. Anyone else? Nope. We'll proceed. Correspondence, Massachusetts Selectmen's Association Regional Meeting is Wednesday in town in Boston, between 11:30 and 1:30. And it's basically a legislative discussion. Be nice if we're local, but to get in town, so I don't intend to go, if anyone on the board has an interest in that. I'm sure there'll be some discussion on funding of schools and the like. Next on the agenda is we have correspondence from KP Law regarding a rate increase in their services. When we brought them on initially, we negotiated a rate of $180, a unified or blended rate of $180 per hour. And the ODI rate was increased to $1.85 effective July 1, 2016. And they're asking for $190 commencing July 1, 2017. So does that require acceptance of that rate?
No, I think because we've incorporated it into the overall budget, but I do think it's important for you to know, I know that Barbara St. Andre has been with the community for quite some time, and I will say that the law firm itself has been extremely invaluable this past year with a whole myriad of different types of issues that the town has faced. So I think we've continued with the same budgeted amount that we did the previous year, so it'll just, we'll have to just continue to watch that, you know, dependent on, obviously, the slight increase.
Thank you. Next is the CMRPC legislative breakfast on Friday, May 19th. CMRPC in Worcester, Washington Square Union Station. And that's, the main subject of that is the education foundation budget. That should be pretty interesting, and I'm considering going to that meeting. If anyone else is available to attend?
Sorry.
I got a word.
Yep.
I put that in the packet, because I know, as we have met with the school board, there has been some discussion about not having an ability to really influence at the state level. And one of the things that I know that in our FinCom meetings and also with regards to our joint board meetings, I have discussed a number of times that, at the legislative level this year in particular, they have convened an actual ad hoc committee to actually look at the foundation formula inadequacies that exist for, for an actual overhaul. So I think it's a good thing, so I hope that some of the school board members will use that power of their voice, as they have in so many different ways through the budget cycle, to actually go and not just listen, but to also speak of the changes that they would like to see. So it's a local forum, so I think it would be really good.
Also, Jeff Beckworth, Executive Director of the MMA, has an article in the Beacon that's worthwhile reading.
He's actually saying that that formula no longer works.
Right.
Which we all know.
Which every town across the state is saying.
New business. Lease agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I think in front of you, you have a final, final draft that has been reviewed by our town council and also has been jointly proposed between many, many negotiation sessions. I will say, they're just like anything, when you're dealing with real property and also dealing with the interests of two parties that are really important and significant, there can be times where you have impasses that seem like you're not going to be able to get over them and insurmountable. And then there's other times where you come very easily to the table and find common ground. I want to say that I'm really, really pleased to be able to have the Legion post here tonight for the official signing of the lease that has been negotiated for the future of our town hall to be relocated at the site of the American Legion Memorial Post 411.
Thank you for your effort, and I've reviewed the lease, and it's basically everything we've discussed. And if any, if there's any discussion, I'll entertain that now. If not, I'll entertain the motion to sign the lease this evening.
I make a motion to sign the lease agreement with the Millville Memorial American Legion Post 411, for the lease agreement for the property located at 290 Main Street here within town.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Do you want the reason documented, Andrew?
First off, I don't see why we should be paying rent, considering we refurbished the building. It seems like that would be put towards our rent, and that way, we wouldn't have to pay rent and refurbish the building. And that's one of many questions I have about this, so, plus I wasn't privy to all the negotiations, so...
I would say that that's true. We had many, many negotiation sessions, and those questions came up quite validly from members that were able to participate. And I think that with a lot of serious thought and listening to the, also, like I said, the interests of the other side, we were able to come to a common ground, I think. So, thank you.
So it's signing tonight?
Yes.
Official?
It's official.
And now, your group has voted?
Yeah, so, yes, my, our, our council has reviewed the lease and has agreed to it, as he saw that the changes that we required were put in. And our lease committee has, has looked over it, and they agree to it. So we'll have everybody signing tonight, with the exception of our junior vice and our senior vice who are not available to attend, but they will try and make themselves available to the town hall to sign it at a later date. But we do have three members of that committee that can, that can sign tonight, so it will be official.
I appreciate that. I don't know if you want to stay through the whole meeting, but I will leave.
I will.
Okay, you will? Okay, great.
The three of us will wait to sign.
I would appreciate that, that's great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Purple Heart Committee, Jennifer Wood.
Oh, yes, I'd like to ask Bill Clark to come back as the commander or the host. I was asked to have the town consider the idea of us being, becoming a designated Purple Heart community. There are many different communities across the Commonwealth that have actually done this, knowing that we have had Purple Heart veterans in this town, and knowing that I worked very hard for one of the greatest veterans, I think, in this town was Johnny Mack, to receive his Purple Heart. I think it's a good thing to have the board consider. Even though we like to always recognize our veterans, I think one of the things that Mr. Clark would like to talk about is how he has come to look at this issue and is hoping that the board may embrace some aspects of it. So I'll let you explain a little bit more.
So I guess tonight is mostly informational, hopefully to get the town of Millville's Board of Selectmen's blessing to start the process to become a Purple Heart town or a Purple Heart community. A member of the community did approach the Legion regarding the Purple Heart designation, had a sign made up out of their own pocket. Granted, it's not that much for one sign to be produced, I think it's about $62. It's reflective, meets all regulations as far as the highway department goes. I know other towns in our area that are Purple Heart communities or towns is Uxbridge, and they became a Purple Heart town or community December of 2014, Millbury, October of 2013, Grafton, October of 2014, Upton, January of 2015.
Northridge has signs up now, too.
And Northridge has, no, they weren't on the website when I looked this afternoon, so...
Oh, well, maybe it could be Sutton?
Sutton is, is a Purple Heart community, but they weren't on the website either.
Oh, okay.
But Uxbridge, Millbury, Grafton, and Upton.
I'm seeing them more often.
Yeah, and there's about, I want to say 56 communities right now throughout the state that are Purple Heart communities, towns, or cities. And it just really goes out to not only recognize those veterans that served, those men and women who served our country and gave up their time for their families and departed, departed their families to go serve in foreign lands or even across the country, or, you know, even in Adakonas, Hawaii or Alaska. So, but mainly, it really recognizes those, those men and women who not, maybe were wounded in action and received a Purple Heart, but also those who gave them their ultimate sacrifice, their life for our country. And I think they should be recognized every day, and not only on Veterans Day or Memorial Day, but having a sign at numerous locations throughout town, being at the entrances from other towns, I think is a, is something that really needs to, needs to be done, to recognize our veterans even more than we already do. And I know Millville are really chaos with their veterans, and very supportive in all the things that, that they need. And I haven't reached out to, but will reach out to, our Veterans Agent, Lincoln Barber, and I will also reach out, there's someone else I wanted to reach out to, but I forgot who it was. But anyhow, I wanted to, really, tonight, to present this to the board and really just let them, let you guys know and ask for a blessing, to go ahead and just start the process, because it's, it's not really too long of a process, but you've got to come up with a proclamation, you've got to word it correctly, and how you want to recognize and who you want to recognize. So...
I think the board will support that.
The other thing I wanted to make known is that the town is not going to be on the hook for any cost. The signs will be, will be purchased from other means. The town will be not responsible for any maintenance. Putting them on a post or any part of that matter, that'll all be taken care of.
Basically, they're installed at the portals of the town.
That's right, exactly right. I mean, we may start off with the major portals, the primary portals, like 122, and come over the state line, and then later on, advance that to some of the other little ones, like Lincoln Street coming from Blackstone, Chestnut Hill coming from Lenden. And there's so many that you can think of.
I think we have five where we have the "Welcome to Millville" signs.
And we could just...
Well, four, because one was stolen.
And we can, and we can limit it, and we can limit it to those five where those "Welcome to Millville" signs are. So that way, it's just not out in the random, out by itself, and it's not really picked up.
The board wants to thank you for your...
Well, thank you. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't all my work, and I can't take credit for all this. The member that approached us had a lot of work to do with it, and also my former finance chairman. So I'm taking it on now, and I'm running full steam, and I look forward to putting the first sign up. I know the outlook from the, from the community member wanting it to be presented at Memorial Day, but I assured that person it's probably not going to be able to happen. It is a little more work we have to do before we actually make the proclamation and actually make it official.
So I think, Joe, you were with me when we had a conversation with one of our Purple Hearts? And I was asking him about the saying, what do you think? And I know, you know, he, he said the same things you did, you know what I mean? The sacrifice and the this. I mean, he came home. So, you know, he, but he said, you know, it's a nice thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. And I'm glad that Millville has picked up, because I've heard rumblings about this coming.
Right.
And I was, and we had engaged in that conversation with the gentleman, so I'm just glad that, to see it here in front of us now.
I specifically know of two Purple Heart veterans in town. I'm not willing to go out and ask people that are, that I may think are Purple Heart, because you know what, I consider it a volunteer basis. If you want to be recognized, it's a, it's a certain, it's a niche area. You don't, there's a lot of things you don't ask veterans, and that's one of them. A lot of veterans don't want to be recognized, and I understand that. And I hope the board would understand that and just understand that the people that want to be recognized will be recognized at that point, but those people that are Purple Heart veterans that do not want to be recognized still deserve the same amount of recognition. So I think, I think that's, that wraps it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
We need some help on this one, Mr. Callahan.
Sure.
Mass Works.
I've been asked through TEC Engineering, we just recently had a meeting, the chief, myself, Mike Myers, our town planner, and also Brian Malali. We had reviewed what was considered to be almost the formal of the 50% draft design plan, and so I would like to try to schedule based on when you may be able to have the most common ground for, okay, I'm sorry. We're just trying to establish a time period. They would like to try to do this in mid-June, so that we can continue moving the project forward. At that point in time, we'd share a number of resources from TEC Engineering to actually look at what has already been designed and reviewed, and offer the public also an opportunity to see that. So I just, I know that we have a meeting on June 5th. This would be something we're looking more towards mid to third week of June, and if we could schedule it...
Maybe for our second...
Yeah. If you would like to do it as a regular scheduled piece of the meeting, we could try to do that, although I think it would generate a lot of conversation, so...
So just for, for the audience's information, this has, has to do with Central Street?
Yes, it does. It's the million-dollar grant for Central Street. We're moving very sound pace with the state. We have a coordinator of the Mass Works program who's intricately involved, but one of the things that, of course, we've reviewed a number of different drafts of it, but they are at that 50% phase, so this is a good time to start to get feedback. And also, people are curious. I will say, we just started Ironstone Street today, and you saw the detail out, and obviously, they're moving quite rapidly with that as well, so, you know, I think it's exciting that we have a lot of infrastructure projects that are just coming online, but this one still has a way to go, and this is where we want to hear from the public, as well as from the board, on what they think.
And that one is scheduled to be completed for June 30, the end of the fiscal year of '18.
Right. So they're, like I said, they, types of programs that they are offering grant awards for now is really to try to keep pace, because in the past, there were too many projects that dragged on and on. And so I, one of the things I had committed to the Secretary for Economic Development and Community Development, that we would work very hard to not only stay within the parameters, but be a shining example of trying to stay on budget and stay on time. So we're so far, knock on wood, we're doing that, and so this would be a great time... So we're so far, knock on wood, we're doing that, and so this would be a great time to have you be able to weigh in, as well as the public, for any concerns or excitement to see what we're going to be able to do.
Thank you.
So you would like, can I just go back to that? I just wanted to make sure. So do we want to do it at a regular meeting?
No, I think.
A separate meeting during that week?
In about the third week.
Third week, okay, so maybe in between. All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Board in agreement with that?
Yep.
All right, I will explain that and.
I'm going to keep you on the hook here with the O S R P. You did a great job in writing the grant application on that.
Oh, oh, the Open Space Recreation Plan? Yeah, I was going to talk about that. If you want to, if you want to top skip.
No, I just didn't fit in.
Oh, down below, okay, gotcha. We call it the Conservation Assistant Grant Award, but yeah, I will explain that a little bit more. I was actually looking to see if Mr. Robinson was here for the community garden, but I don't see him here yet, if he comes. Yeah, he's not, so.
Is there another purview of the chief as well?
Well, a little bit. Chief, I don't know. I was just going to update them that the Parks and Recreation Commission had voted, as this board had entertained from the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation, Mr. Del Gizi, in the fall, had talked about establishing a community garden. And I had talked with Mr. Robinson before the weekend. I know that he was eager to start. The chief has been really great and gracious, again, now outside the building, never mind inside the building with us staying there, that the location is going to be behind the police station. They've now rerouted some water, so that was the main issue why it had to be close to someplace that had water. And Mr. Robinson, this past weekend, I know, was getting materials ready to actually start the garden and has had a lot of interest in it. So I expect it to be very successful. I had invited him, and he was going to try to make his way here, so if he comes a little bit later, we can always talk to him after the meeting. But I wanted to give him an opportunity to talk about what his plans were, but I'm not him, so I won't do that. I'll just explain what's already happening.
Continuing on with the old business toll day, we now have a generalization and indemnification form appropriately signed for a toll day on May twentieth between nine a.m. and one p.m., and the rain date is the third, June third. So I will entertain a motion to approve toll days, seeing that everything's properly signed. The application's in order. We don't need a vote on that. Do I hear second?
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll do selectmen's forum at this point. National Grid, I attended a municipal energy summit a couple of weeks ago, I guess April twentieth. And basically, as a result of that, there are lots of resources available from National Grid to be involved in energy projects on a municipal level. And fortunately, I walked away with a certificate that would allow a ten percent reduction on any energy project up to a hundred thousand dollars. So it could be worth ten grand for the town. And we've got a few individuals, and I'm happy to see that the chief is here, and that, you know, one of the issues that we have in terms of energy usage and the like is the fire station. It's an energy hog. I don't know if the roof got done this weekend. Nope, it didn't get done, finished. But, you know, there are a lot of issues related to energy that we could apply to the fire station. Also met with, at that same summit, a guy by the name of David Gardett, who's an expert with infrared heating and that kind of thing. And, you know, he offered to come down and take a look and make some suggestions in that regard. So if we were to move forward on this, I would strongly recommend that we direct our attention to energy usage at the fire station. Looks like the chief's in agreement. Town Administrator's report.
Oh, can I just?
Well, I have a form, too, but go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Joe thinks he's the only guy around.
I know.
I think he's tired of talking.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the town report. I thought it was put together. I know we collaborated in regards to some of the things for the Centennial, with the Centennial Committee. I do love the format of it binding like this, like the old-style books that we had, so I'm just, I'm pleased with it. I know you worked long and hard on it, and I know, you know, our committees and boards themselves, getting their reports in is always a task, so.
It certainly is. It's my first go-around with it, so.
It is, and I thought it was very nice, so I hope that the townspeople have an opportunity to pick one up and to, you know, it's a historical piece at this point, too, so that's it.
Okay, so in the past, on all our budget seasons, we always have a, well, we had the budget presented at the town hall, at the town meeting. But some people have asked me more detailed questions of what's on and writing, so I'd like to get a copy of the actual, the whole line item.
Sure, sure.
So I can answer intelligently.
We had it that, okay, yeah.
Because it's like, well, I don't remember what that exact line was.
It might not have gotten all the way down the table, I apologize, but I do have that.
And I think the line item typically, they post online, so once town meeting approves of it.
Yeah.
It usually goes on our website, and that's the itemized budget.
Yeah, because I've had people ask me about certain line items.
I did, too.
And it's like, wow, there's hundreds of them.
If somebody asks me something, I'm like, that's the whole department, because I think they were thinking salaries.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not, it was whole departments and things of that, so I agree. I think it was new for everyone.
Right. I even found that out up in Uxbridge. Somebody thought, somebody thought something, and it was, you know, the whole department. It wasn't one person. But that's what happens whenever you're talking about small increases, large increases or decreases, people don't know, and if they see it for the first time, I wouldn't have.
But if you could ask Fincom, and then that way it's posted to the website, because I think I would like to refer some people to there, too.
Sure.
There are like eight or ten pages.
Right, yeah, because every year we have a stack, and it's easier to have one postcard type at the meeting, but.
Right.
Especially when you're being asked a specific question.
Right.
And it was new. It was a new format.
We have a totally new accounting department. I understand that, so.
Anyone else? Now for the Town Administrator's report.
Well, to start off every meeting, for my update, I always start with the update on the town hall, and there's a few things that I think are important to note. If you're driving by the American Legion post, you will see a brand-new driveway and also parking lot. It's very exciting because we're getting very close. Chief, did you hear me? We're getting very close. He knows there's a few more things, but they also, over the weekend, we've had people working, and the students are working very hard. There's a whole vestibule that is being built right now, and it is coming out really remarkably well. And we also had a whole nother, what will be our meeting room, carpeted, and that looks really great. And there has been a number of things installed in our two bathrooms that are handicap accessible. And we have another room that is in the verge of almost being complete. It still needs to be painted and also the carpeting installed, and then we will be working towards assembling the actual office spaces. So it's really exciting. It looks terrific. I know the public will be very excited to see it. It's in some ways still a construction site, so we limit the people going in and out. But having said that, I assure you that it is around the corner. As far as a legislative update on my list of things, I wanted to just let everyone know that through the House Representative's Budget, which was right before our budget deliberations, and so it got caught in between two meetings. I wanted to note that I had heard and had dialogued with Representative Kevin Curros about the status of budget requests in terms of amendment. He had filed an amendment, and both he and Senator Fatman were hoping to at least reach the mark of a hundred thousand dollars for us. But he did express that that is a budget that is tight this year, and I will agree with him on that. I think we're all feeling the pinch, but we're also feeling it at the state level, because the April numbers for tax collections, which usually are at its highest in the spring, actually are way off their mark. So the state budget itself is looking now exceeding half a billion in a deficit for this past year. So that having been said, Representative Curros did, was able to pass an amendment for twenty-five thousand, not a hundred thousand, but twenty-five thousand. And now, of course, the Senate is going to be taking up their budget at the end of May, so we still have a chance to reach that. But regardless, I told them we'd be extremely, extremely grateful, even in a difficult budget year. So I just wanted to put that out there, and also, I can't remember if I had mentioned earlier that I had gone to Boston to meet with a member of the Administration and Finance Executive Office, Lauren Peters, and we discussed the existing bond that was for our town hall. And we also discovered that it looks like the executive administration, despite the fact that it's still a difficult budget year, they still have capital projects, and they still are moving legislation forward. And it looks like there may be an upcoming bond cycle that has actual money attached. Remember, our bond was passed in previous cycles and didn't have money attached. So the key is to try to get everybody on the same board to be able to make it a priority for the executive administration. So I've discussed it at length with both Representative and our Senator, and I think, you know, we may have potentially two attempts at the apple, so to speak. So that's good news. Of course, they've got to get through the budget cycle, and this hopefully would be something that would be before the end of July, that actual bond authorization will come out, and they would be voting on it. So hopefully, we can get something put there, too. So I just wanted to give you that legislative update, and I, you know, I'm going to continue to be very positive about that piece of it. The other good news is that we did receive notice from the Department, well, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, which oversees the Conservation Assistance Grant Award Program. And I had actually applied for a grant that would actually help us actually create an open space recreation plan. And this, like many of the other things that I've been trying to work with either department heads or, you know, try to lead myself, it's been one of those things where if we have an actual document, it opens us up to other funding. We have been restricted in this town for a long time because we didn't have certain documents on file, and you cannot apply for certain state grant funding without that document. An open space recreation plan is one of those documents, and you have to have it on, at least even on a draft, to be able to go forward. So this was an eleven thousand dollar award. We were successful in being able to get it. It does have a tight timeframe. I have already signed a memorandum of understanding with C M R P C to actually start and commence that open space recreation plan. And there's also money within that eleven thousand that if we deem certain parcels of property in town that are significant, that we can actually have an appraisal that's paid for, so we don't have to do that. So those are two goals that will be a part of this grant program, and the biggest part is that it requires you to file another grant, which will be before the end of July. And that grant is a park grant, and one of the things we're talking about is that will be a more substantial grant, at least fifty thousand. And what we'd like to be able to do is piggyback it on some of the plans that we're looking at going forward for enhancing some open space, park, or recreation areas. So we'll get more defined on that in another meeting, but at least this piece is in, and now we can go to the next piece. In your packet, too, I did put, even though we've already talked a little bit about it, I did put the fact that we have signed a more definitive scope with Central Mass Regional Planning for the Shared Planning Grant that we had written in, you know, I had done that as a regionalized thing with the Town of Uxbridge. So if you look at that, you'll see for our side of the grant process, we were listening to our planner, in particular, who talked about the fact that we, I think we all know, we need a master plan finished. And we also, in listening to the planner, the needs for a zoning diagnostic of our existing zoning bylaws was something that was considered to be a priority. So you'll see in Attachment A that is provided for in this grant. This comes on the heels of a joint meeting that we had with the Town of Uxbridge, the town manager, myself, several members from C M R P C, town planner. Uxbridge does not have a town planner, but they had the chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen. And it was agreed upon that this, doing a zoning diagnostic for both Millville and Uxbridge and using the economies of scale and trying to get a good pricing for that was something that we worked out with C M R P C. And the other piece of it is to actually look at the potential for a shared planner, what that would look like, what kind of costs and resources would be associated with that. So they'll do all of that and then present to us, and it will be something that, you know, hopefully looks at a lot of aspects. This doesn't include the full amount of the grant, and so I'll be working with both Uxbridge and our planner and seeing the best way to use some of that, and also this board. So, but so that was good to know. There were a couple of the things that I did not put on the agenda, but they just came in, and I think they're important, public announcements, if I may. One of them, because you might get calls about this as a selectman, we were just notified that the natural gas pipeline, the Algonquin Gas Transmission Line, is scheduled to perform its maintenance work, and that will be on the sixteenth around six p.m. And it'll be off Kempton Street near Forest View Drive, and it'll go through also approximately four p.m. on May twenty-second. So it's going to be a range of dates from the fourteenth to the twenty-second, and usually what they said they do is they release odorized natural gas. There's no reason to be in fear of it. It's just one of those things that they have to do, and there's no danger to that. But they've already alerted police, sheep, right?
I did see it, the police department along with the fire department released it via social media.
Yeah, that's great.
So it's circulating.
Right, and.
Are you putting it on our website as well?
Yes, well, that's what I'm saying. This came to me this afternoon, so I will get it up on the website, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew that part of it. I know I've been getting an awful lot of calls about gypsy moths and from a number of people, and those little buggers are everywhere, and people have been inquiring, our Board of Health, are we spraying for them? Because we, you know, have in the past, I think, potentially sprayed for mosquitoes or something, did we not?
Oh, well, we have that mosquito, yeah.
Prevention thing. So we don't. We don't actually do anything with gypsy moths. And so one of the things that I would suggest is go on the state website that looks at how to manage that. And I've had everybody tell me all different kinds of remedies from putting Dawn in a spray bottle with water, and it's supposed to be very effective. I don't know. I haven't tried it yet, but I wanted.
I think some of the conversation was coming that other towns, I know Uxbridge, Blackstone, like my girls play in Uxbridge softball, but they sprayed the fields where the kids are playing soccer and baseball and softball. Whereas I know we, our ball field is used by one group, right? So we don't have as many, you know, properties that are being used by a large population. So I can understand why some other towns are spraying, you know, their fields and their recreation areas, but I'm not sure if, you know, if ours warrants that.
Well, something, I can take, you know, listen to what they did over in Blackstone. I can reach out to the town manager there. I know that they might have some resource that they've been able to engage with that might be reasonable cost. I don't know, but.
There was an informational meeting at the library last Thursday night, wasn't it?
Okay, yes.
And I know some town residents attended that, maybe. And I know some town residents that attended that, that maybe we can get some input.
Okay.
Mr. Finn and Mr. Davis.
Attended.
Attended.
Okay.
I know a lot of people are just spraying their own yards, you know, privately.
Okay. Well, I want to put it out there because I know it's been on the minds of some people. Ironstone Street, like I said, has started with the pulverizing. That is scheduled to be right along the route where there's been existing sidewalks. They're talking about next week actually really constructing the sidewalks. They're on a quick pace as well. I know that some people have lost their sense of where the boundaries are. But one of the things I think I want to emphasize is that as we're improving streets, what may have existed as sort of free parking area or the, the boundary has been blurred where people were parking on sidewalks and things like that. I think one of the things that we have to emphasize to people is that if we're going to put money into, you know, infrastructure and recreate and rebuild, you know, infrastructure that is really need of that and has been, you know, sorely depleted or damaged, we can't necessarily put something back and have people do the same thing over again. Because you'll find yourself in the same awkward position of needing to have the infrastructure put back in place. So I know that there will be some adjustments that people will make. But I think if people are really serious about the kind of investment, we know it costs an awful lot of money that we get a very small amount to do our roads and bridges. I would hope that people will understand that, you know, we might have to alter our behaviors in order to keep our roads passable and also make residents also adjust to that, onto their private property and not onto the public way, which may have been the case for many years. So I just put that out there. I think we had a little bit of discussion about the budgets, but I wanted to personally thank both this board and the Finance Committee for many, many hours, many workshops, and many formal meetings with our town accountant, trying to come together with both a, a different electronic approach and also an approach that really looked at how do we share our resources and how do we communicate that. I know we've done an awful lot of outreach to both the school and they, to us. So I think this year compared to last year, I think I do want to congratulate the Finance Committee as we move forward. We know that we still have some steps to have to consider, but I think all in all, it's been a very good experience. And I thank the Finance Committee for the many, many hours that they have met. And finally, I just wanted to give my own little thing about the annual report. We have a lot of people who are, I think, commemorative in this book, not just the people who, who have passed away that made significant contributions to our community. But I want to thank the Vice Chairwoman for inspiring me to think about a way to capture our centennial. There were many people who attended town meeting, but there's a lot of people who were part of the centennial or part of the history of this town that I would encourage you to come by and get your commemorative edition. I mean, what we're hoping is that it'll be something that will be put away in maybe a time capsule in the MES School in the future, like it was this year. But, you know, I can't promise that every year it'll look as nice and as fancy as some people would think it is. But it was something that I think the people who did work to commemorate the 100 years of this town will be proud of that document. And, and hopefully, it will stand the test of time to, you know, reflect the community. So I thank the town for that and for all of the stories and also the reports that each department did put together. And that's all I have. Only to let you know that your next meeting will be June 5th. And we do not have an executive session because we're doing our actual lease in public.
So we'll be signing then?
The minutes, we'll be signing the perm, ah, this one, the toll day, and we'll also be signing the lease. So if I can start with the toll day and the lease that way. If I can sign this. I'm going to need your pen when I sign the lease. And I'll do both of these, the official. Only one of them is for you, Roland, but both of them will be for me. Phil, if you want to come forward and we'll have you sign. Okay, you got a pen?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Get the ink on that. Get the ink on it. That's all right.
Did you want a citation of some sort? Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to. Not that you don't tend to do things already. All right. I'll try to put something together.
Is that an Eagle Scout?
Yeah.
Who is it?
Jack.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. They're on a tight time schedule. They usually give a little bit more. But I think he's going away for something this summer. He did a project, not here in town, but at a church.
Just don't want to have to put your date out there.
Okay, I won't. I won't put it right now because I might have a red pen, so.
Yeah.
I got mine has blue.
Okay. It's official.
It's official.
Thank goodness. So I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.